I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order. Could you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Burgoyne, Gierbaugh, Peters, Rhodes, Roth, and Tahr. Our staff, we have Mr. Campell, our city manager, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, Chief Rennick, PCF Superintendent Skull, I believe Business Ambassador Korfman, City Engineer Rubel, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and a number of other staff members. And for those of you in the public this evening, if you'd please be sure to sign in the back, we would appreciate that. In just a moment, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I have a couple things. The first of which is on new business item 13-132, boiler replacement at the recreation center. That price at the end of the motion is incorrect. The correct amount is $49,917. So again, the 46 number is not correct. Instead, it's 49,917. Also, we're going to be removing from the discussion portion of our agenda this evening an update on the 2013 Celtic Festival, and that is going to be brought up immediately following this motion to approve the agenda. Also, I believe Mr. Gierbaugh wants to add an item to the discussion portion of our agenda. He would like an update on our sidewalk inventory and a discussion of funding. Is that correct, Mr. Gierbaugh?
Correct. The FY '14 budget for sidewalk and where we stand on it currently.
Okay.
And then the other item, I want an update and discussion on alley access and easements.
Okay. Alley access and easements.
Specifically, the leather bucket alley.
Okay. So those two will be added at the end of the discussion portion of our agenda this evening. If we're clear on that, and if there are no further amendments or changes, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Roth. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that motion. And at this time, I'd like to bring our city treasurer forward and those members of the 2013 Celtic Festival Executive Committee to discuss and share with us the -- I hope I'm not stealing your thunder -- the great success that you all experienced just a couple months ago. So thank you for being here this evening.
What we're going to do is we're going to present you a closing report. You'll have a hard copy as early as tomorrow, but there were some last-minute changes, so we didn't want to give you an incorrect information. And I'd like to also say that myself and all the executive members, thank you very much for the opportunity to run the festival again this year. We did well, and we're very proud of the job we do and the city we work for. We still are agents of the city, and we recognize that we only do this on your behest. The first report will be our Treasury report.
Okay. Well, I would also like to comment on how wonderful it was working with the festival this year. I am pleased to announce that we have, at the city level, we have received the Friends of the Festival's 501(c)(3) documentation. So they are officially their own entity, and I have worked with both Amber and Terry to work to make sure that we've kind of streamlined the receivables and the expenditures that have went through the city. And we've also had a working relationship with them as to what money was going into the Friends account after. And then what we've done this week is Amber went through and reconciled -- or Amber and Terry both went through and reconciled all the receipts to what I showed as receipts and what we showed as expenditures. So just for your information, how the festival has worked in the past, the city receives revenues for pre-sales and ticket sales. It comes in through our counter and re-recorded into revenue line items that are designated for the Celtic Festival. And then any checks, the Celtic Festival committee members authorize and sign and send up to my department, and my department processes accounts payable that gets charged to expense line items within the general fund budget. So what we've done this year is we have reconciled those numbers to the numbers that were kept by the treasurer of the festival to the treasurer of the city of Celine for both revenues and expenditures. And we are pleased to announce this year that the city has made a $1,246.45 profit. And all other proceeds have went directly to the Friends of the Festival account. So the city, expenditures and revenues, everything else, the city made $1,246 this year, which we will -- and then we also have some money that we are anticipating coming in that we'll work with the festival on. And so at this point -- and I reconciled those numbers, and then Terry also did, and we agreed to the penny. So two of us matched up our numbers within the penny. So at this point, I am pleased to turn it over to the Friends of the Celtic.
Hi, I'm Terry Murphy. I'm the treasurer of the festival. Just want to give you some basic numbers. We saw 5,750 people come into the festival this year. Of those, about 500 were the seniors that we allowed in free, about 50 active military, and about 750 volunteers came in. The total revenue coming in was $72,000 and change. And like Don said, I'm going to email all of you a hard copy of this report. Mickey Joe and I were working on finalizing the numbers right up until this meeting started. We had a real good year. The Friends of the Festival handles all of the beer, so these numbers that you're hearing don't include beer revenue of $27,000, almost $28,000 in beer revenue versus $8,000 in expenses for beer. We sold 68 kegs of beer, which is a lot of beer. A lot of that has to do with bringing in the craft beer. We brought in a new group of people. The Friends' balance account increased by over $18,000 this year, bringing their closing balance up to $20,000, almost $27,000, which is -- that's a real big deal for the Friends. We just had a good year. We sold a lot of beer. For the first time in history, we sold out of all of the T-shirts and everything that we had. We had 500 kids go through the "we folks." Even Celtic Survivor made over $600, which is one of the things that the Fellowship Baptist Church brought to us a couple of years ago and said, "You need more family stuff," and they took complete control of it. And it actually makes money considering that their expenses are zero. It was a great year. Do you have any questions about the numbers?
Thank you, Terry.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Burgoyne.
Yes, the question actually is for either Todd or Mickey Joe. When in the city's books, not in the Friends account, but in the city's books, where there's a positive of revenues over expenditures, that amount is designated for Celtic Festival and carried over to the next year as designated for them, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Roth.
The number of profit you say we made excludes the in-kind expenses that we as council waived at the police.
The number that I gave you, the $1,000, that's strictly dollars. That's strictly how much money we took in versus how much money we expensed out. That is not including any of the in-kind.
But I like to say, point out the fact is that the space is provided for the Celtic Festival office, the police protection that was done, the work that was done by our DPW people. We waived all that, so it really isn't a big profit.
Well, the...
I just wanted to point that out for the record. Got to be playing with numbers. We need to look at the total cost that's costing the taxpayer.
Yes.
They're giving me these numbers, but they don't include the in-kind stuff that we waived.
No, that is -- that's true. And that is true.
So that is not a profit to the city?
It is -- no. I mean, if we took that off. But it is a -- the expenditures, what came out of the city fund, what came out of the general fund, and what went into the general fund, and I'm trying to break this down to dollars and cents only, is a profit because there are other fees for other activities throughout the community that we also waive that do not impact the general fund. So I am just basically explaining what comes out of the general fund, dollars to dollar.
I just want that understood, the public understands. Because I hear one group played against another group and so on, I want to be sure that all the cards are on the table.
Right. And I personally know by speaking with our department, our staff meeting, and talking to the different department heads about how, over the years, and with this new group of organization, the amount of time from not only my department, because the Friends have taken on a lot of the reconciling and doing a lot of the work, but also through the Department of Public Works, that they've really stepped up and reduced that amount a lot. So it is getting better.
And I too want to thank everybody for their time, their efforts. It's a fantastic event.
Yes, it is. I agree.
Mr. Burgoyne, did you have a question?
Well, more a comment. While I agree with Mr. Roth that the word profit isn't very good to use in a public setting, whether it's the schools or the government or whatever, I think that all of the events that we have downtown and the Celtic Festival, all these community events that make the community stronger and better, I would strongly support the Celtic even if they had a net cost to us rather than, you know, came out in the plus. So I agree that the word profit, it's not the best word to use, but these are good events for the community, so I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Appreciate your comments. Were there additional comments from the Celtic Festival Committee?
Yeah, we've got three more things that we'd like to cover real quick.
Please.
We'll try to make it fast. We had some positive changes this year. We worked with Main Street and had a Mastodon Mayhem Run that was very successful. And by the way, their costs were blended into ours, the DPW costs. It's the third year in a row, by the way, that we've reduced DPW costs, which is what we promised. We had the craft beers, which Terry has talked about. We had some new foods. A barbecue was there this year, great weather. Again, the 500 seniors that got in for free. Hopefully, that will go up next year. We had 14 local merchants that only paid $50 to sell at the festival. We provided them with a main tent, and our goal is to continue to bring in local people and participants. We had a huge increase in non-for-profit participants, the Marines being one of them. So we're going to continue to do that as one of our overall goals is to continue to increase city involvement and, you know, the public.
I am Jeff Ulrich and a member of the Celine Executive Committee. One of the things that I was responsible for this year was coming up with some marketing plans, and we had a goal of introducing our festival to more Southeast Michigan than we ever had before. And one of those things was bringing on a partnering with a radio station, 94.7 WCSX, which is a classic rock station that broadcasts throughout Southeast Michigan. And what they offered for us was about 120 30-second commercials plus a bunch of live reads for a week leading up to the festival, and then a live broadcast Saturday morning from noon to 3:00 p.m. Saturday afternoon. The other thing we did is we got partnered with CBS Billboards again and got two billboards in the area. They have a really cost-effective program for nonprofit organizations and good inventory, local inventory in the area, so they're a good organization to work with. And then the third thing we did is came up with a Living Social deal, which they sent on an email to about 600,000 subscribers offering our deal, and we increased our attendance by about 550 people that way. Any questions?
Just real quick, explain how that -- the last...
Living Social?
Yeah.
It's a social media marketing program. It's revenue sharing that they -- in this case, I'll use round numbers. We offered two tickets and two free beers for $20, which means we're basically giving away the car cost of two beers. Revenue was split 50/50.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Satello. I'm the co-chair of the Celine Celtic Festival, and this year I was charged with doing most of the fundraising. And I just wanted to share with you some of the things that were highlights of that. We secured a grant from the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs in the amount of $3,000, which we are very pleased to receive. In addition, we got to our Friends account donations from local businesses in the amount of $5,500, and then also an additional $1,600 that came to the city from the DTE Energy Foundation and other agencies that go right directly through to the city, but all coming into the good of the festival. We also had in-kind donations in upwards of $1,600 from our local businesses such as Bush's and Benito's and other Ypsilanti Standard Printing and other groups that gave us either wonderful percentage off of items that we purchased or donated things in kind. So those are all things that all go together to the good of the festival. So we're really pleased to form partnerships with our businesses, some that have donated many times in the past, and then ones that came on board with us for the first time. So we're very happy to reach those new friendships with those businesses. As part of our thank you to those businesses, we provided them with a picture and a letter of thanks, and then we also gave them a little card, which I brought additional. I'd like to pass out, if I may, to the council.
We felt very strongly to maintain the relationship throughout the year with these businesses so that we can let them know how the festival's doing, the status throughout the year, and that we could have their support in and come in here.
So thank you very much again for letting us put on this festival for the city.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions or comments? Mr. Peters?
Just real quick, I want to say thank you to the hard-working volunteers. It's these folks here tonight and so many others that didn't come in tonight that this is an annual working -- it takes all year to put this event on. It takes a lot of folks, a lot of good folks, folks who do what they say they're going to do, and we certainly forgot that team. The festival's going into its 19th year. I've been with the festival for nine of those years, and I see some changes. It tends to change and reinvent itself. For instance, this year, although we still have a Celtic theme, like Don mentioned, we have some very new things, like the Mastodon Mayhem Race. We have electric cars. The Humane Society was there. The Marines were there. All commission committees are welcoming to down and set up a table. I believe Light Up Celine was down here. We had the Parks Department come down and set up a Salt Springs tent. So the more community, the better. I think we're becoming more and more a stronger community event. And another thing to make me very proud was some of my family members came up from Pennsylvania to see the festival this year, and they were astounded that a town of 8,800 could put on a festival this size and this quality. So I felt very good about that. And that's from a total outsider. They really, really enjoyed it. So again, thanks to all the hard-working volunteers and all the many, many hours that go into this festival.
Just shortly in conclusion, we created some real strong partnerships this year. I've never worked -- we've never worked better with the police department than we did this year. Enthusiastic support from the police department, I might add. And our partnership with the DPW is even stronger than it's ever been. I think we reduced them to a half a day of setup and a half a day of tear down. So -- and the cooperation is fabulous, fabulous. We would like to formally request that perhaps on your next agenda, we talk about running the festival again next year. We found that we can be more successful if we have a full year of fundraising because we're very, very competitive out there right now, and we can plan and be more profitable, although that's not our ultimate goal. If we have time for planning, we can be more profitable, and we can get more people involved. We had five additional people that requested to be chairman of different committees and get involved in the festival. So thank you again, and if there are any questions, I think you can route them through Jim. We'd love to answer any additional questions. And like you said, you will get a hard copy of our report, you know, hopefully tomorrow.
Any additional questions? Well, I would just make a comment and sort of echo some sentiments that were shared by Mr. Burgoyne and by Mr. Peters. And I've said this on numerous occasions throughout the past, oh, six to eight months. This is really a new and improved Celtic Festival, and that's not just, excuse me, a clever catchphrase, and it's not just a glib throwaway phrase. I actually believe it to be the truth. You know, whether you talk about the amenities and the programs that are offered, whether you talk about the new craft beers, whether you talk about now, for the second year, taking credit card and working with the Liquor Control Commission to take your beer and wine wherever you want in the park, to reaching out and developing new partnerships with corporate entities, you've made this festival better, and it's greatly appreciated. And as Mr. Peters said, the festival would not be possible without you and without all of the volunteers who helped to make it a success. So we are indebted to you. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. I hope that you'll reach out to me in the coming weeks so that we can work to put something on an upcoming council agenda, because I do understand the importance, excuse me, and significance of setting a date and determining a date sooner as opposed to later. So again, thank you for being here. We appreciate the report. We'll look forward to receiving an electronic one. And again, thank you for all that you did to make the 2013 Celtic Festival a great success.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have a motion to convene into a short, hopefully, closed session. So this will be a motion to convene into closed session and consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, in particular, discuss strategy connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. The city council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Is there a motion?
Move to convene to closed session.
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Terrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gierbaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgoyne?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, so we are adjourned into a closed session at 7:53 p.m.
[inaudible]
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 I always get peevish when I come down Mills Road and get some of -- coming up the hill and I get -- get this hospital.
[inaudible]
As long as all the equipment was there and everything, I still remember when they decided we just had that project. Make no sense.
[inaudible]
Cost more to bring them back.
[inaudible]
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 Yeah, so be it, I guess.
Tell the mayor I want my taxes to go up so we don't have to be too petty with everybody.
[inaudible]
[laughing]
I told Gretchen Dusko the same thing. I don't care what tax you raise, raise them all.
[laughing]
I don't have any more money than anybody else, but it's like living in a third world country anymore.
[inaudible]
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 Nashville, Nashville?
Yeah, my friend lives down there, so I went to a concert first. He really liked it down there. My boy should have seen it. End up worn down on that bike, seems nice. Luckily, I got it. It's a nice. It's a season, you know. Yeah, exactly. They're kind of been down there four years now. Yeah. I lived there too. Yeah, we got this. It was nice to watch. Been a while. Yeah, trying to get back in the swing.
Yep, alright. Very exciting.
Well, I can just have to. What we discovered is we're planning to natural. And there's studies. Certain items, good cycles, and right away. A whole bunch of different things. That's what we decided to make the streets. And we did create, we'll be twenty accounts. Each natural tree plant. Like, we decided. So, we do have a lot of balance. I need lawyers that do that two years. You know, have to pay back. On general, on. So, that's what we've got, we've got a hundred thousand. All we did was. About two hundred and fifteen thousand. On set, that's in the. And then, yeah, we have to wait until. Ever since we worked three months into the year, so. I'm not, I'm probably. Yo, except for now. Again, there's a whole. All the money that we received. That'll be true. Lots of guy in there. Well, why is he bringing you? It's not in the general. Yeah. Obviously, you have to. Right, right. It's about recovery and the. Yeah, the major streets. We shall make that happen. No, I don't know. No, it's not limited to major streets. It's, it's, and the scope is just like this. Doesn't have to just take the, just the major streets. Even. So, we do have these. We go, we expand the insurance system. So, we're going to have these. I could cash it or pay. The justice. Watch it.
Do you have that for us in Chinese?
Really? Yeah. Oh. You're gonna have. I'll settle for all me. I think it's gonna be. Everything, we're getting everything out locally, locally around. Yeah. Yeah, I don't mind. That's another, when you think about it. I like that place in Ann Arbor. I like the ones over Michigan Ave. They get it. Yeah. Drive up K W. He has to have a K W. Is that true? Stop, drive up. I know you have a street. Did, yeah. I think I just, I think I was. Library or something like. And I think it was still there, but I think it was out of season, so. I haven't had dinner, guys. A W. Just. Same colors. Just do it. What's that? Does she still have either? Mostly, yeah. I'm just doing, was that, was that a? Time to do. Yeah, we've got. I don't know if it happens very often. In Mexico? Yeah. Like, once a month or? Once a month. At the place. Michael McQueen had this, like, one and a half degree angle down there on the front of the rollerblades. You only have to stop. The old day. No, I'm terrible at the rollerblades. I don't like. Right, exactly. Apparently not. Today, yesterday? Yeah. Okay. No, I know, I have Joey Cole, I have our, what we, what we took. No. So. So, we had to pull off the old. Downhill stuff. So, we, we have all those now. And these people are just a member to. But, you know, it's. Okay. Didn't ask it up? So, then, um, and. I'm sure. I think there was. And what? That's, that was Gary's. Well, you probably want to put together a board. Really, I didn't try real expenses on my side. Sixty is the. Right. I mean, and this is just. So. You know, what? Well, I thought it was a line or some phase. Yeah, because I know I talked to Joey while we were. And Jan and. Over. Last year, hold on. Last go take. Well. Oh, my, it's really, really good on the sauce. Yes, we should. Flight was so long. Yeah. Should be. Yeah, I know. I figure I'm the only person on the road at 3:00 AM. Also, I'll get a Facebook message. And I'm saying. Yeah, it doesn't. She has. Second rate her, right? But now we're saying you said we started everything. Actually, we might. But, like he says. Because it's more. Out there. Project. Like, say, states, streets, keep projects, all that. Yeah. You know, like, I had. Yeah, yeah. Well, it's. No, I mean. They keep shut off. First thing, the first thing they'll do today is go through the decade. Yeah. Nobody thinks. They never spoke to her, remember? You don't expect all these. Well, they're taking, they're taking, uh, action on whatever they do. It's just that police officer has to contract. But still, they could just, they could do that at the end and come back. And, um, reporters going to stick around. It is. Did I just say that? What? They are. Oh, yeah. Oh, really? Yeah, well, they got a high, high power water now. Yesterday, they don't have to go social first, they get paid block system. So, they wait till the end, then we can make the piece, they pay the entire block system. Sounds like this guy writes the team law. I mean, that's what it sounds like. He's in there. He's in the room. He's in the room. I was around, uh, right here.
Oh, yeah. I was.
I don't.
There's also.
I'm waiting on it.
I'm. Our.
Yeah, they all.
No, I just. I. Packard and, uh.
So.
I mean. And, um. There's a couple of.
Is that like a town hall?
Yeah, all of them.
That's.
Right. Yeah, they're just really wanting to work. I live on the other side. Come out. It's enough where they couldn't just speak off. I just want to be. They, uh, I have a lot of things to ask them. In our. Five years. Less. It, that's what it was. The fifth said. It's relation. But it didn't say for sure. It weren't like the last year.
They could talk about it like.
When you're five.
And figure that out.
We just want to be five years out for the next five. Five years.
Yeah. You might look out. Well, we run dry.
I like. And that never means. Have you ever walked past? Show us. Resident. Every. Kind of everywhere.
I will complain about it.
I can.
And.
We got the. I always. Nobody else does that.
Nobody else.
Okay. Sorry, you haven't changed your. You know, you never, from what I. I love an explosion. You can never. No. What's yours?
Oh, we.
Oh.
I mean, it's important. You're just drawing. You're almost gonna go.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good sense there.
Yeah.
If you can't do it right away, it's not bad. But it doesn't.
We're gonna make a lot of words still, so.
Oh, yeah.
But I think we.
Oh, no, that's not. Can't.
Yeah.
It's. It's.
It's what you do.
I'm like, yes. But. Oh.
Or. But I think so. Whoever had the little map.
Right.
It's gonna end. You've got the nine o'clock.
Actually.
We all have to kind of, you can stop. The whole lady was right.
I love.
Yeah. And I got a hole. We need that here. And, uh, we only got six holes to start.
Oh, really? Was it good?
I'm not sure what it was like. You know, it's all just about right. Did we see that in two weeks ago? I mean, it was not, but there was no election. And I said, okay, and then. You order. And then the guys had spent, you know.
Right.
It is.
And just maybe took the other part out. Everyone. They said, stay. And now when they did, they didn't sign. But we. You know, everyone was trying to, you know, finish up their land hall or something. So there was a little. A little. Tense or something like.
Good.
So we went over there. There's a lot of mistakes. But. And there's something. And boring.
So.
I, I actually grew up.
And then we, and you bend down.
Yeah, in my family.
We were so. So.
Yeah.
And it was. Oh, we're supposed to eat. Sounds like a company. I think it will. Well, it did. Some came. Yeah.
So you're with eleven.
Well, we go. Worked with. Take four chapters. Be back in that.
Oh, yeah.
And it was just.
Somebody else.
Yeah, there's not, there's no ready. It's great. It's our life.
I know. No, I work.
I have a walk in the rain. Still, I'm struggling. Well, they're new. My desk is.
Oh, I've never done.
Okay, well, I picked the shop like.
Yeah. My power.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Would like.
I, I did. Well, with the top of the. Why? It's a track.
Okay.
No, it was a whole train.
Okay.
Because, because. That was a topic where it's associated with demonstration. And you have all sales.
It puts a work.
Yeah.
Yeah. The hole.
You follow one. Very. And I've done. Cross country. Just want to run along the side.
How's it doing, Ron?
All right. Awesome. Thanks.
This one?
Oh, terrific. Yeah.
We can't shut the heat off anymore. Okay, I need a motion at this time to end the closed session and return into a regular open meeting.
Motion.
To end the closed session?
Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. Hearing no discussion. All those, actually, nope, it's been properly moved and seconded. I apologize. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Turhar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerbach?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgoyne?
Yes.
Yes. So we have reconvened into regular session at eight thirty exactly. We move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? No, then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
Moved by Girbaugh to approve and adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on now to a public hearing, application for I F T Flatout Incorporated. This will be a series of four motions, the first of which is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September fourth, two thousand thirteen memo from Kathy Korfman, Administrative Finance Assistant, regarding recommendations of I F T application from Flatout Incorporated. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. I don't see Ms. Korfman here this evening. Would you like to handle this, Mr. Campell?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we, Kathy Capelli's also here from Flatout. So if you had any questions for her, but in brief summary, Flatout is requesting an I F T. Amount of four hundred fifty thousand of real property and one million one hundred eight thousand nine hundred eighty two dollars personal property. And the Special Projects Commission is recommending a five-year I F T. So there was some clarifications that were made, asked and made at the Special Projects Commission, which they have, and that's reflected in Ms. Korfman's memo. So with that, are there any questions or if Kathy could answer any questions as well?
Let me start by, are there any questions for Mr. Campell?
No.
Ms. Capelli, do you care to make a statement at this time? Certainly not necessary, but you're welcome to do so if that's your wish. No?
No.
Okay. But we appreciate you being here. Appreciate the representation from Spark as well. Okay? If there are no additional, if there are no questions and no comments or discussion items related to this motion, which apparently there are not, it's been properly moved then by Rhodes and seconded by Peters to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The second motion is a motion to open the public hearing, affording the applicant, general public, and taxing units an opportunity to be heard. Is there a motion?
So move.
Been moved by Roth to open the public hearing and seconded by Girbaugh. Since there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Public hearing is now open. Anyone who should, who would like to speak is welcome to come forward to the podium.
Move to close.
Been moved by Girbaugh to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Roth. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Public hearing is now closed. The final motion will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution approving the application of Flatout Incorporated for an industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand for real property and one million eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars for personal property for a period of five years, subject to the terms and provisions of the tax abatement agreement, to be entered into by the applicant with the city of Celine and to authorize or not to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said tax, uh, tax abatement agreements, excuse me, as presented.
Move to approve and adopt and authorize.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Burgoyne to approve and adopt and authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Any discussion? Mr. Burgoyne.
Yeah, since the applicant is here. I appreciate a description of how full this fills out their, their facility, how close they are to maximum, that, that type of thing. And then behind the facility, there's about an acre and a half or so. That at some point, hopefully, they would expand. Is there anything that we would need to do with regards to water retention or anything that we, we could do to be helpful in that, their future? So generally, a question of how close they are to building their facility up and in, in their future plans, is there anything we can do to help?
Do you want to come to the microphone, Ms. Capelli? Thank you.
That's actually a topic of discussion frequently. We, we've actually secured a warehouse offsite at the ti, at the time, you know, because we've got these other financial investments that we need to make with equipment. Before we can look at expanding the building out further for storage needs, which, which we're desperately need. So that, that's on the horizon, and it's definitely talked about all the time for, you know, the ingredients and packaging piece. But right now, you know, financially with, with what we're required with our bank and so forth on spending for capital investment, we kind of have to go at the equipment first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make the comment that our building and engineering department is really good at working with clients and with, with our corporate companies. So when it comes to the time when you are looking and you're wondering whether there's an issue with the water retention or what you can use or what you can't use, or if you need a variant or whatever, there should be somebody that would come in and, or ask Gary Robel to come out and talk and.
Yeah.
Just talk that through, because sometimes there are opportunities there that you may not know about.
Gary's been so supportive and, and helpful to us in any, any questions that we have. He's a great resource. Thank you.
Thank you. There are additional questions for the applicant or comments? I would just say that I enthusiastically support this motion and the granting of this I F T exemption certificate. Flatout is one of our most valued corporate citizens. Not only do you make an exceptional product and employ a, a number of people and, and good paying jobs, but you also give back to the community and you support a lot of benevolent endeavors in this community, and it's appreciated. And actually, at the Special Projects Commission meeting, I commented to Ms. Capelli that I, I see the Flatout product all over the place. And I was at a very high-end grocery store in Dearborn that had a very prominent display of, of Flatout products. So it's good when I, when I venture out across southeastern Michigan to see Celine products. And so we hope that you'll continue to, to thrive and invest in Celine and to echo Mr. Burgoyne's comments, if you know this, but if we can ever be of assistance, don't hesitate to reach out to us.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here this evening. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve and adopt and to authorize. Since there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item thirteen dash one thirty-one. This is Michigan Municipal League Annual Liability and Property Insurance Pool Renewal. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the annual renewal premium with the pool for a period, for a time period, excuse me, of September one, two thousand thirteen, through August thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
It's been moved by Ms. Tahar to approve, and I'll let Mr. Rhodes be the second. I believe we actually have a, a guest from the Michigan Municipal League here this evening. We appreciate you, you being here. Do you want me to turn it over to you? Do you care to make a comment? And then our guest would like to, to add anything?
Sure.
We would welcome that as well.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you just mentioned, Judy Thompson-Trojan, our, our representative of Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool for Meadowbrook is here as well. And so it's that time of year, and we've been very pleased, um, for a number of years now with M M L Liability and Property Pool. And as you can see from my memo, yet again, we've actually seen a reduction, slight, but still a reduction, which is going in the right directions for, from my perspective. So one hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, a decrease, a premium decrease of twenty-one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, just shy of two percent decrease. So we're very thankful for that. And I won't steal your thunder, Judy, so about the dividends, I'll let you present that as well, so.
I don't want to take a lot of your time, so let me just hit the highlights. I am here to answer any questions about the actual.
I am here to answer any questions about the actual proposal that you've received. But just to give you a little background about the MML Liability and Property Pool, it started in 1982 with four members. We now have 410 members. We've added 13 new members this year, haven't lost any members. Our premiums have been going down over the past few years. The 2009, they went down by about 3.4%, 2010, 6% on average for all members. 2011, 4.62%. They went up slightly less than a percent last year. This year, the first two quarters, they've gone down 2.4% the first quarter, 0.77% the second quarter. So our trending is to bring our premiums down. Our goal is to keep premiums stable for all members, add additional services. This year, we added a cyber risk endorsement for all members. So we're always looking to improve the coverage and try to bring the cost down. In addition to that, we started giving dividends back to members from surplus in 2011. And this year, the city will get a dividend the month after the premium is paid. I'll come back with a dividend check for $17,123, which will be for the city. And I wanted to let you know that the insurance board met last week, and they met and approved the dividend for 2014, which is going to be about 15% of this year's premium approximately. So the city should be getting a dividend next year for about $19,000. So the trends are, our goals are bring premiums down, continue to give dividends, keep the services as good as they are or better, and to constantly improve the coverages for our members. So those are our goals. Are there any questions?
Any questions for our guests this evening? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I wanted to just say the pool appreciates your continued membership. So thank you very much. And I hope to, I hope that will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there no questions for our guests or for staff? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Excuse me. Mr. Rhodes?
I noticed that we don't have coverage for the Mill Pond Dam. I wonder if we should have, or why we don't?
We haven't, and actually, we did. I just asked her for an application, because we have to provide information, and they'll provide what it would cost. The underwriter will do that. So staff is working on filling that out, just to see what it would cost.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? This is kind of a no-brainer in my book. We appreciate you being here and appreciate you representing an entity that provides us with a really exceptional product. Thank you. Okay, well, it has been properly moved by Ms. Tahar and seconded by Rhodes to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for being here, Judy. We move on to new business, item 13-132. This is boiler replacement at the Recreation Center. This will be a motion to authorize or not authorize the purchase of a boiler replacement from Campell Incorporated of Raypack X-Fire, 97, or 96%, excuse me, efficiency boiler for the price of $49,917.
Motion, Rose?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Peters to authorize and seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. Guess I'll turn it over to staff, if anyone has any comments they'd like to share. Ms. Scruggs?
Just a little bit of background. It's in the memo, but this is a 22-year-old boiler. It was the original from when the facility was built. And we have got it, you know, we've got its life expectancy out of it, and we've actually extended it quite a bit, further than what it was anticipated. And currently, at the beginning of the summer, like in June, we disassembled it to take a look at it, to see if there was any more repair that we could make to it, and it's in pretty bad condition. And it was suggested that we replace that with an energy-efficient model. And Jeff, a couple of years ago, had worked with a company to take a look at energy efficiencies throughout the city, and the number-one target was the boiler at the rec center that would make the most impact, make the most sense, you know, would have the best payback. So when we went to bid on this, we quoted the energy efficiency rating of, it was, let me read, 94 to 90% efficiency, and it would be fresh air coming in rather than, I don't know the terminology, where it's taking the internal air and recirculating it, which the boiler is located in the pool maintenance room, where there's a lot of chlorine, a lot of corrosive materials in there that will eventually deteriorate the machine and the duct work and everything. So this would be taking fresh air in and expending it outside of the building, so it will be better for the facility. And for the bids, we did ask for a replacement cost and a repair cost. And after reviewing that, Jeff helped quite a bit with the evaluation of that, as well as my building maintenance, Brian Spraw. And we came up with the recommendation to replace it with the energy-efficient boiler.
Are there any questions for Ms. Scruggs? Mr. Gerbach?
Just real quick, is there any incentives or anything from DTE for replacement like this? Because I do get a lot of grants and things, but since this is energy efficiency, I didn't know if you all looked into that.
I believe there is. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the dollar figure with me, but this boiler replacement is one of their prescriptive incentives, so we'll just need to fill out a form. I think it's, I kind of recall, like $2,800.
Mr. Roth?
I was wondering, this item is included with our FY '14 budget?
This was not included in the budget figures that we had.
There was repair costs?
Oh, yes, you're right. Yes. Yes, we did have a repair cost.
What is the difference between repair costs and?
Yeah, 100% about, I think $25,000 is the budget for repair, and it's, yes, $49,000 less $2,800.
I think we had $30,000. Yeah, we had $30,000 for repair costs.
And there's funds in fundings.
Correct.
Mr. Roth, did you have a follow-up, sir?
No, I just want to know the information on that.
No, it's a good question. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, thank you. Do we have a projection of how much we will save in operating costs by the much higher efficiency?
I don't have the dollar figure of the savings, but the Rebuild Michigan report identified this as the best return on investment that citywide that we have available to us. And I think Campbell, in their original quote to us, estimated a five-to-seven-year payback. So if you use that figure, we're looking at saving $10,000 a year.
Okay, good, excellent.
Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I just think it's a great idea. It doesn't make any sense to put $20,000 into a 22-year-old machine, because they just don't last 50 years like they used to. And especially if you can change your air intake dynamic, I think that's a big plus.
One thing I found out after I put the memo together, the warranty information, it's a 10-year heat exchanger warranty and 25-year thermal shock warranty.
Additional comments or questions? Thank you both. If there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to voting. It's been moved by Peters, seconded by Burgoyne, to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item 13-133. This is an Eagle Scout project. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 27, 2013 memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs regarding the Eagle Scout project at Tefs Park. To approve or not approve, the request of Evan Buse to construct a 10-foot octagonal Gaga ball pit. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Been moved by Rhodes to approve and seconded by Mr., was that Mr. Gerbach?
Yes.
Turn it over to our, I guess, our Eagle Scout applicant, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Ms. Scruggs, if you'd care to join them up front?
I'm gonna get this.
Come on in, Paul.
So I plan to construct a 10-foot octagonal Gaga ball pit, or Israeli dodgeball, as it's called, on the grounds of the Saline Rec Center, east of the main building and in between the volleyball pit and the pavilion. It'll be completely funded by solicits and nothing funded by the city or anything. A lot of people don't know what Gaga ball is. It's a relatively new sport, and it's essentially a dodgeball-like game. And recently, at the Parks and Recreation Summer Camps they've had, it's been a big hit with the younger kids, and they've only used a temporary structure, and now they've asked to build a more permanent structure.
Ms. Scruggs, do you care to comment at all?
I think Evan kind of did a nice overview, but if you could point to where the pit would be located, I think, right there. And the sand volleyball. And we met with Evan to take a look at a good location, and we came up with this location because it's centrally located, it's not interfering with our soccer field, it doesn't interfere with any of the other activities that are going on out there. And as he mentioned, our summer camp came up with this idea last year, and we've been using temporarily the boards for the ice rink. So it's not being used in the summertime. So we grabbed some of those boards, and we set up a temporary Gaga ball pit. And that's worked perfectly fine, but it's a very popular sport, and it's very difficult to kind of haul those in and out. And Evan was requesting to do an Eagle project, and we thought this was a very good fit. And Gaga ball is kind of a weird name. People think of Lady Gaga. And, but it really is. It's a very fun game for the kids. You can play 20, you could play 10 at a time, 20 at a time, 4 at a time. But it's essentially a playground ball, and you slap it with your hand, and you try to hit the kid's legs. So they have to jump, get out of the way. If it touches their legs, then they hop outside of the pit. And then they wait for, you know, one or two people to be left, and then they all climb back in and start over again. And it's really fun, and our kids are addicted to playing this, and it's a healthy game for them, and it really is a good time. So this would be a very welcome addition to the Tefs Park.
Questions for our applicant, Ms. Scruggs? Mr. Rhodes?
As Carla commented, it took a little while to get my mind around something called Gaga, but once I did, a couple of questions. What's the height of the side walls?
That will come out to 32 inches. Yeah, 32 inches high.
And there is no gate or opening you have to climb over?
Yeah, you have to climb over.
And what's the floor surface?
We're going with just leaving the grass floor in.
And how will the grass get?
The grass will end up going away.
It's going to be gone, right? Then it's going to be mud or something, or you put sand down?
Well, it'll just be dirt, which is fine.
And the approximate dimension across?
It's, if you're talking about from one side to another side, 26 feet across.
26 feet, so that's big. I was wondering about that, when you said 20 people at a time playing in there, it's kind of imagined like a kid's swimming pool size. That wasn't going to work.
And if you go online, like after we leave the meeting, you go home, if you Google Gaga ball, there's a lot of videos that show kids playing, and even, you know, adults and teens playing. And it really is a fun game. It's fast-paced, it's, you know, it's a good, a quick turnover, so the kids don't get bored with it.
Is there any way to construct that in a manner that would make it accessible for those who might be less able, less mobile, and not able to climb over? Is that an issue?
You know, the accommodation that could be made is that we can use the portable, like we've used tables as well, so we could actually separate the tables and make an ancillary pit. So that would be an accommodation that we could create if we have.
Seems like we should consider that.
I was just going to say, the drawing shows that it looks like there's lower edges or lower entries.
There's a lot of different designs. Yeah, we can work with Evan to make, like, I really like that idea of you can make like a lower, yeah, step over.
So it's just a step over instead of having to jump over?
Yeah.
Mr. Peters, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to say, Evan, congratulations on your quest for Eagle. That's a big deal. That's quite an accomplishment to make it. Congratulations, I'm sure you'll do fine. And don't be afraid to reach out to some of this very supportive community, and maybe you can get some in-kind help. Maybe reach out to some of the lumberyards and hardware stores, and maybe you can get some in-kind donations, help you bring that cost down a little bit.
Additional comments or questions? Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it. And I echo the comments made by Mr. Peters, you know, accomplishing the Eagle Scout, if achieving the Eagle Scout status, it's a big deal, and you should be very proud of yourself. So thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Rhodes, seconded by Gerbach, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for being here. We move on to new business, item 13-134. This is EVIP. This will be a motion to approve or not approve the accounting and transparency documents for reporting the first phase of the 2014 EVIP program. Is there a motion?
I move.
Move to approve, Mr. Roth? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Does our finance clerk care to make any comment? Ms. McDonough?
I don't have any.
Okay. Unless members have questions. Mr. Burgoyne?
There's a 39.8% increase in state funding shown from year to year. That's an oddity coming from what?
Big piece. Last year, we had to see him on Project Down Mill Pond, and the money was not received in time, the 60-day window, so we had to actually defer that revenue, so the expense did last year, and it was given this year.
Additional questions, Mr. Burgoyne? No? Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
I had some comments, questions, sort of editorial in nature, I think, more than anything else. Some of this may be a requirement of the state format, but on the first page that shows the revenues, slide number two, typically, and in most of the other charts, the earlier years are shown to the left and the newer year to the right. So it looks like 2012, 2011 ought to be flipped on slide two, just the columns, in order to be consistent with moving from left to right as you go up in years.
Okay. Yeah, I think the template itself came from the state, and I think that the bar graph below, it had 12 and then 11, and then, so the financial data, the number data, kind of like flows with that.
Okay, and then slide three, where it says amount on the side, it might be good if that's said in thousands or something, because it's not obvious to people what those numbers represent. See, I had the same comment on the cost side about slide two, 11 and 12. And slide four and five, and again, this is probably on the state template, it's got an item called landfill closure, post-closure care. And since we obviously don't have those, seems like those items could be removed if the state lets us do that. So, because citizenry looking at that might wonder where those numbers are and what they're doing. And then I think my last comment on quality of life on the next page in ours, miles of sidewalk and non-motorized paths, the numbers are the same for prior and current, and so it seems as if the arrow ought to be neutral.
The years are 2011 to 2012. So the new library path is not in these numbers, because that's 2013.
Right. So it says here 1.78 and 1.78, so that's no change, so the arrow should be up.
Oh, did I? Okay, okay.
It will be up next. It will be up next year.
Yeah, it will go up next year.
Yeah.
So that was the right change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, did you, just to be clear, you want me to flip the financial columns for the 2011, 2012?
Well, if, if the, if the state lets you do that without messing things up, we ought to be consistent, I think, in going from left to right as you get to newer years.
I mean, what's the state interested in showing a change? I know the trend on the graph is trying to show the, you know, what happens over a number of years, but are they focusing on the change in percentages, the reason why they're showing from 2012 to 2011?
Yeah. But it can go either way.
So there isn't any requirement based on their, the way that they want to see it?
No, it's just the way it was delivered, so I can change it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Tihar?
Uh, well, I was gonna disagree with, with that suggestion because the heading says compared to the prior year. So I would understand that they mean we're looking at 2012 and comparing it to the previous year, so to me it makes sense to have 2012 first, but I'm not going to quibble.
Whichever way. Okay, Eddie?
Any additional comments, questions for Ms. McDonough? Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you working on this.
Okay.
Well, Ms. Burgoyne? Question or, or a discussion, I am?
Oh, just a comment.
Okay.
Good job.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your work.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's nothing further on new business item thirteen dash one thirty-four, it's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Tihar to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item thirteen dash one thirty-five, this is the crack filling, excuse me, this will be a motion to approve and adopt the 2013 overband crack sealing program in the approximate amount of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars and to award or not to award the project to Scoldeller Construction?
Moved to approve and award.
Okay. Then moved by Mr. Rhodes to approve and award. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. And I apologize if I butchered the name of that, that company. Mr. Fordyce, our DPW director, do you care to comment at all?
I think, in particular, this is an ongoing program to maintain our streets that are in good condition. This is not a, a program to renovate streets that are already in poor condition. This is just simply a, an inexpensive, relatively inexpensive maintenance program to maintain the streets that are, are in good shape. And this program has been going on for a number of years. About three years ago, we expanded it a fair amount, about doubled the amount of crack filling we did each year and we've had very good results with this contractor and would like to continue.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Fordyce. Are there any questions for our DPW director? No? Okay, thank you. Appreciate you being here this evening. Any discussion? No? Then it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Peters to approve and award. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item thirteen dash one thirty-six, Celine Police Officers Association and Celine Sergeants Association, AGT. This will be two motions, A and B, and since they're not printed on your agenda, I will read them both twice at the appropriate time. So the first motion, motion A, will be a motion to ratify or not to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement dated August 21st, 2013, between the Celine Police Officers Association and the City of Celine as ratified by the Celine Police Officers Association. So one more time, to ratify or not to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement dated August 21st, 2013, between the Celine Police Officers Association and the City of Celine as ratified by the Celine Police Officers Association.
Moved to ratify.
Second.
Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth to ratify. I'll get you on the next one, Ms. Tihar. Of course, you have some documentation in front of you. I'm assuming there aren't any questions. Are there any comments? Mr. Girbaugh?
Based on what we've seen on this contract, I think this is one of the best approaches that we've had in many years and I appreciate everything and the contribution that our police officers are giving to the city. It brings us a little more in parity with all of our employees, including our staff and non-bargain-for ones. And I believe this is an approach that shows our commitment to both our police officers and also our commitment from our police officers to the city. We all know that we're in this together and I think this is one of the best approaches that we've seen in a long time and I greatly appreciate the work that both our police chief, our city manager, and our new attorneys have taken in getting this, plus everything that the officers have contributed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I, I echo what Mr. Girbaugh said and I, I'd like to emphasize that I think it's important that we have equity between the very, various employee groups. Sometimes a bargaining group can be off different from the others and this reconciles it more, it brings it more into parity, into more equitable and more even amongst the groups and I, I like that part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Additional comments? Well, let me just say that as mayor, but also as a, more importantly, as a citizen of this community, as a council member, I'm, I'm very much of the opinion that this is probably, actually these two collective bargaining agreements are probably the two best contracts that I've worked on and the two best contracts that I'm about to approve as, as a council member. I think that Mr. Burgoyne and Mr. Girbaugh's comments were, were spot-on and I think that these agreements are consistent with a number of our policies. As both of my, my good colleagues articulated, it is our desire to create parity between all of our union employees and our non-union folks. It's also important that every employee has skin in the game and is invested in his or her future. And it's also consistent with our policy as a city to, to generate cost savings and improve efficiencies wherever that's possible. So these collective bargaining agreement, agreements not only include a pay freeze in the first year, but also nominal increases in the second and third. It also includes for every employee that has a guaranteed pension that they contribute three percent of the cost to that pension annually. There are improved, it improves flexibility and the ability of our police chief to manage that department effectively and it also gives every employee the opportunity to, to have some skin in the game as it relates to his or her health insurance. The, the important point that I want to make here this evening, my friends, is in no way does this agreement or this approach negate or undermine my belief or the belief of council that is, which is that public safety is pretty fundamental, it's pretty core and vital to who we are and that those who serve our front lines, whether that be as a police officer or firefighter, deserve to be fairly compensated for their work and that we should devote and allocate resources so that they can do their jobs effectively. I believe that, that's one of the reasons why I ran for council, one of the reasons why I ran for mayor, because we, we are the community, we are because we have well-managed, well-funded, public safety departments. So this is a, a big step for the city and again, for all the points that I previously articulated, I enthusiastically endorse this tentative agreement with our police officers and, and the second with our Sergeants Association. I do want to thank the employees for their willingness to give back and to understand that we are all part of a family here, we're part of a team and I appreciate their, their sacrifices and their contributions. And as Mr. Girbaugh said, I, I greatly appreciate the work of our city manager, our police chief, Mr. Rennick, and our, our new labor council, Steve Gerard, for their work on this, very important issue, it's probably one of our greatest responsibilities, so we appreciate it very much, gentlemen. There are additional comments? No, that's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth to ratify. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the second motion, again, because this is not printed on your agenda, I will, I'll articulate it twice, it's very similar to, to motion A. Motion B will be to ratify or not ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement dated August 21st, 2013, between the Celine Sergeants Association and the City of Celine as ratified by the Celine Sergeants Association. Again, to ratify or not ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement dated August 21st, 2013, between the, between the Celine Sergeants Association, excuse me, and the City of Celine as ratified by the Celine Sergeants Association.
Motion to ratify.
Okay, it's been moved by Burgoyne to ratify.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tihar. Any discussion? No? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on now to new business item thirteen dash one thirty-seven, the naming of the alleyway, Leather Bucket Alley. This will be a motion to approve or not approve the name of the newly renovated alleyway between Benito's Pizza, Waggles and Whiskers, and Breckin Grille Mangiamos to be the Leather Bucket Alley. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, it's been moved by Roth to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. I see that we have our very gifted Main Street manager here this evening, yeah, that's you, Bob. Why don't you come forward and, and talk a little bit about this and then we'll open it up for questions if any council members have them.
Thank you. We're excited about the, the name Leather Bucket Alley, we're excited about the feedback, we're excited about the story behind Leather Bucket Alley and we're also excited about the process that led us to this name. And it's exciting, I think, as well, that the name was suggested by our fire chief, Chief Heft. So the, the name is significant because it, it reflects what the alley was used for many years ago when the fire department was across the street in what is now Maureen's Flower Shop. They stored the leather buckets that they used to put the fires out in the alleyway that, that resides between, well, the one we're talking about. So, and we're excited about the process because we, we opened the, the naming up to the public and we had a hundred and thirty-three suggested names, we put those names on our website, we put those names on our Facebook page, allowed the public to vote on those names and we came up with a number that received a significantly similar votes. So we pulled together a, a group of, of community leaders that included the, the Historical Society, obviously, Celine Main Street, the, the Chamber of Commerce, there were representatives from the city there as well. And, and we chose Leather Bucket Alley because it does have historical significance and, and has a, a story behind it, a reason for, for the name. So as I said, we're excited about the, the name and, and put it for you for approval, we hope.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions for our Main Street manager? Ms. Tihar?
Thank you. Are there, Bob, are there any plans for any sort of informational plaque or display explaining the name?
Um, we're talking about that. One of the things we will do is, and the reason we tried to rush this through to you and, you know, get the process done, is we'd like to have it up in time for Oktoberfest, so the, the, the archway will have the name of the alley on it. We'll also have a plaque designating the people who contributed to making this a reality and I like the idea of, of something that explains the history. We'll, we'll talk about that and see if we can fund it.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Let's be cool.
Additional comments or questions? No? Thank you very much, Bob.
My pleasure, thank you.
Appreciate you being here. This is an exciting endeavor, a very catchy and unique name. It's been properly moved then by Roth, seconded by Peters to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on now to discussion items. First up, we have commission, committee, and task force reports. Mr. Peters?
I have one. You mind if I put a picture up?
Absolutely not, please.
Chase, could you please act by the table? I'd just like to, just like to give some credit where credit is due, in case some folks don't know, but Renshers Farm, they are connected with the food gathers and the food gathers is a Washington community-based outfit here and they, they feed thousands of people in the area every year. Up at Renshers Farm, out of their garden... This is some of the fruit they put out. And so far this year, they've produced a thousand one hundred pounds of vegetables. And there's more to come because the squash has to be picked yet and that's gonna boost it up quite a bit. So there's a lot of weeding and trimming and watering and working the heat up there. These are the baskets, these are the baskets that go out and all these vegetables are picked, they're all clean, they're, they're, they're ready for consumption when they go. And I just wanted to thank folks like John Baumann and Kathy Baumann, who do an awful lot of work up there, and Taylor Jacobson, who, who does an awful lot of work, and so many hard-working volunteers at Renshers Farm, produce these kind of vegetables. I just want everybody to see a picture of this because it is pretty impressive. And the farm is more than just a, a museum, it's really an active part of the community to helping feed the folks that need it, so. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters, and we appreciate you bringing some recognition to this, this very noble and generous endeavor. It's very kind of you. Are there other commission, committee, or task force reports? No? Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I, I'd just like to come back to the Celtic Festival report that we had earlier and the fact that they're going to be coming back to the city council. In my view, I would rather have, since they are part, part of the city, they're an agency of the city and I think they're doing quite well in, in their annual efforts to balance out and they have the friends and the friends are doing well. I would like to see us have the concept that we would continue to support the Celtic Festival on an annual basis, just, we, we don't really support them financially very much. We have some in-kind support, you know, police, DPW, and probably a small amount out, out of pocket, but all of our downtown events, many of them through Main Street program now, but also, you know, the, the parades and so forth, these things are all part of community and I think Celtic Festival is part of community for Celine, just like the Brackit Friendship Guild is. So I would like, when Celtic comes back, I would like the concept to be not just for one year, but until further notice, you know, that we are with them, that we want to have the Celtic Festival. At least that, that's the way that I see it.
But I, I appreciate those comments and I think for the most part, I'm, I'm very much in agreement with them. My goal has always been that the Celtic Festival be independent financially and I applauded their efforts to create a, a friend's account and apply for a 501(c)(3) or to apply for 501(c)(3) status, excuse me. And my goal was to, to, to get us to a place where the city essentially wasn't underwriting the festival. However, I agree with you in, in regards to this concept of parity and we do provide police service and we do provide DPW services to other community events and that shouldn't be deprived to, to Celtic Festival for any reason. And where the city can support the Celtic Festival, I think it's imperative that we do so, as you previously indicated and as Mr. Peters has talked about on numerous occasions, it's not only an important outlet for community members and volunteers, but it brings a lot of recognition to our community and, and ultimately has an impact, a positive impact on our quality of life. So I think supporting it is, is important and of course, we can continue this, this discussion and hopefully have a robust discussion about the festival when it comes back, if not later this month and in October. Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, well, well, one other thing about the concept of supporting the Celtic Festival and the Celtic Festival sometimes not carrying its weight, it's been both ways. In, over the past, I think sixteen or eighteen years, whatever it was, we had looked at that, we had looked at a fifteen-year period and the amount of cost to the city was in the area of three thousand dollars per year, I think. It was, it wasn't high. In some years, the Celtic Festival had built up a reserve of tens of thousands of dollars and then in a couple of rainy years, it lost tens of thousands of dollars. But from the very beginning of, and, and Joanne probably still has the records of this, from nineteen ninety-five through two thousand and ten or so, the total loss was not a huge loss and if you divide it by the number of years, it's very small per year.
Sure. I don't like, facts are stubborn set things and they don't lie, so you're absolutely right.
Right, right.
Yeah. No, no denying it, no debating it, absolutely.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Girbaugh?
I just would like to clarify that I believe, you know, we'll support the Celtic Festival, but it wasn't until two or three years ago when we, as a city, decided to make sure that we were holding accountability for it and asking for changes, did we see the turnaround that we've seen and which is incredible. But I would like to remind you that the city has contributed over a quarter of a million dollars towards the Celtic Festival and at one point, still had a ninety thousand dollar cash loss in addition to the quarter million dollars that we gave. So even your comment was made, that's not totally correct, so I want to make sure that we have that understanding that the city did significantly invest into the Celtic Festival over all the years. over all the years. So, as we were foreign...
I don't believe, I don't believe that's the case, so I'd like the data to be brought forward. I mean, this is an important point.
Well, I don't know exactly when the Celtic Festival Executive Committee is going to petition me to bring this back as an action item, but I can certainly work with our finance department to get some numbers that can be a part of that discussion.
We had them audited through 2010, and the year by year by year by year. And all we need to do is update to the last audit.
As long as you include...
And it would not show a quarter of a million dollar underwriting.
You start including in-kind services, and I can tell you, those do include that. So, I've gone through this, Mr. Burgoyne, for the last 12 years, and I understand what has been out there. So, I'm not saying, we're moving forward, which is a great way, and I want to go that route, but I don't want to restate history.
The audit will not show in-kind services.
Well, we will make sure that that information is available when council is asked to act upon this issue. I'll make sure that I work with our city treasurer and finance clerk to make that a component of our discussion. Mr. Burgoyne?
I recognize that in-kind services will not be shown. But the in-kind services right now are not very much now and in the future.
Correct.
So, if they were more in the past, I mean, that would be hard to figure out.
We will continue this discussion either at our last meeting in September or first one in October. Are there any further commission, committee, or task force reports? How about reports or other announcements? Ms. Tahar.
Yes, thank you. The City of Celine has had a sister-city relationship with the City of Brecken, Wales, now 47 years. And tomorrow, a group of 24 Celine-area residents will be traveling to Brecken to celebrate the 47-year friendship. And I am fortunate enough to be able, to be the one carrying Mayor Marl's gift to the city. We were very fortunate to, from Mayor Marl to the City of Brecken. We were very fortunate to be able to commission from a local artist, Keith McGuire, a watercolor of the Bowley Bridge, which many people know, but not everyone knows. The Bowley Bridge was named for the late, great, very beloved Sir Arthur Bowley, who served as the mayor of Brecken for many years. Bowley Bridge is in Mill Pond Park. So, and I will be carrying a...
I may.
I'll be carrying also a proclamation, a city proclamation, and greetings from everyone in Celine to our friends in Brecken.
Well, let me just add to Mayor Protem Tahar's comments. First of all, she's being a bit modest this evening, as is her custom. It was actually her idea to commission a local artist and her idea to do a watercolor of the Bowley Bridge. And Keith McGuire, who's very active at 212 Arts Center and serves on our Arts and Culture Commission, is the artist. And this is actually quite striking, my friends. And I consider myself something of a critic of all things, but of art specifically. And so, if it, if it wasn't, if it wasn't up to par, I would express my displeasure. But this is, this is really stunning. And actually, he indicated to me that he's made some copies, and they'll be available for sale. And of course, as Ms. Tahar indicated, it is of the Bowley Bridge. It's been very nicely framed with a little plaque here at the bottom, and it will be presented to our friends in Brecken, Wales, I believe, if not tomorrow, then sometime on Wednesday.
Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday, when our, when our group of ambassadors arrives. So, Ms. Tahar and Councilmember Roth are attending, and we wish you safe travels and look forward to seeing you when you get back. We look forward to hearing about the trip. And I'm sure you'll have a wonderful time. I should also note that most of us, I think we had a working majority on Friday night up at the American Legion for a German dinner that honored our sister-city relationship with Lindenburg, Germany. So, there's a lot of sister-city activity happening right now. And of course, we've got a small group coming in October. And I dare to say that the dinner on Friday night, which was very nice and was a success, would not have been a success had it not been for Mr. Ross's organizational skills and leadership. So, I got a lot of compliments on the dinner and appreciate all you did to make it a success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Tahar?
Could, yes. If I could just add, I failed to mention that the watercolor was very expertly framed by the Celine Picture Frame Company, who advised us also on the best frame. So, just want to give them credit as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Since we're on the sister-city business, we announced at the German dinner that the, there's an opportunity for Celine citizens to travel as a group over to Lindenburg, Germany. The dates would be April 28th till May 10th. The housing is usually provided and lots of food's provided by, you're staying in host families and with host families. The cost of the trip is less than $1,400 for the plane ticket. We made arrangements. I've got, holding a group now of 30 seats, and it's arranged with travel resources. But the condition for going is we, the Celine-Lindenburg Friendship Committee's accepting a $200 deposit, and that's going toward a side trip that they will probably be a day, or two days or maybe three-day side trip while you're there, so help cover that expense. That expense will be somewhere between $200 and $300 as an estimate right now, but it's not firm because it really hasn't been totally decided where we're going. It's up to the committee over in Lindenburg to work that out. If you should be interested, we're doing a first-come-for-serve till we get the capacity that we have. You make the deposit, and that can be sent to in care of my address, which is 186 Anwood Court, or you can email me at roth@bignet.net. My phone number's not in the phone book, but it's 429-4063. And I will be taking the names, copies of the checks, and putting them in order to determine. Once you've been approved to go, then you can continue onward with travel resources to make the final arrangements. That should be a great endeavor for anybody who's going on a sister-city exchange like this. It's been fantastic. It's actually better than visiting relatives.
2014.
This is, yes, 2014. So, we're not going backwards, we're going forwards. Right.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Ms. Tahar?
I, Mr. Roth, I believe omitted one piece of information where the Celine-Lindenburg Friendship Committee is requesting that anyone who participates in the trip also become a sustaining member of the Celine-Lindenburg Friendship Committee for 2013 and 2014. The cost is $25 per year.
That's important, because that's part of the criteria.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you both. There are other reports or announcements? I just have one kind of fun one here. And this is a very informal thing, but I was contacted by some parents of some very talented and gifted young men and women at Celine High School. And we are, again, in a very informal way, designating that September 21st is Clean Car Day in the City of Celine. As many of you know, the Celine music boosters have been doing a fundraising car wash to benefit music programs at Celine High School for probably decades. And it will take place on September 21st between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. at the Heritage Elementary School parking lot. And I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize their endeavors and the fact that this is the main fundraiser for our orchestra program, our choir program, and our band programs. And if you're in town and you've got a dirty car, or you just want to support our young people in their musical endeavors, I hope you stop by. And this, this little, again, very informal proclamation, it's not a mandate, will be posted here at City Hall. And so, this is a great way to support our young people, and I hope that you'll, you'll consider it. Mr. Roth?
Also, I'd like to remind everyone about the cleanup day, County Cleanup Day, on September 21st. That date reminded me, I should say something again about that. It will be held over at the DPW facility from 9:00 until 2:00 in the afternoon. That's a Saturday, September 21. Open to anybody who lives in the county, not open for businesses, but for private individuals. And you can bring whatever materials you happen to have that you're not able to dispose of properly in the garbage or in the recycling. And there is a suggested donation of $10 per vehicle when you come in.
Great. Thank you. You can clean out your house and basement of junk and debris and then get your car washed. It's a good deal. Are there any other announcements? No, then we move on to the Saturday Noon Sirens. I know that there's a number of community members and council members who had some concerns, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Campell, our city manager, to let us know where we're at, and then we'll entertain your questions if you have them. Mr. Campell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, the Noon Siren, just a little bit of recap, recently, this last year, the city relinquished all except one, control of its emergency sirens to the county. Of course, they do, they do the test. I believe it's the first Saturday of every month, as opposed to every Saturday like the community is used to. So, we have maintained the One City Siren behind former Union School, behind Quantum Signal, and we still do that, sound that at noon on Saturdays. And we do that, just like we've done it for years here out of the dispatch center. And as of late, we had some maybe forgetfulness, I guess. So, we believe we've rectified that and moving forward. And so, I don't know if Chief has anything to comment on that, to add to that, but that's kind of where we're at, I believe.
Any questions?
I did.
Along with all the others in the county.
Very good. All right. Well, we have removed the 2013 Celine Celtic Festival because we talked about that at the beginning of the meeting. I just wanted to touch very briefly and give you all an update on the proposed Salt City Springs History Trail, which, of course, Mr. Peters has been working diligently on, and I'll turn it over to him in just a moment. The Parks Commission has recommended that the city council designate that parcel as a municipal park, and it had been our intent to bring it to council this evening. However, our city charter dictates that when the City of Celine seeks to designate existing city property as a park, it must first go to the Planning Commission for review and approval. So, Mr. Peters will be making his very well-received presentation in PowerPoint to our Planning Commission later this month. I suspect that they will universally, or unanimously, excuse me, endorse the proposal, and that will be coming to city council for approval, hopefully on the 30th of September. So, just wanted to let you know that the ball is still in motion, and it'll be brought to this legislative body sooner as opposed to later. Mr. Peters, did you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
That's pretty much correct. On the September 17th, the Parks Commission will review and approve a Salt Springs site plan. Now, September 25th, we'll take that site plant to the Planning Commission, hopefully for their approval. And then, hopefully, we can have city council approve this as a park in the following meeting. Just for some of those people viewing, some people here tonight, maybe you're not familiar with it, Celine has a very special and historic piece of property in its city limits. It's honored by the DPW, by the Dean of Fish Ponds. It's about 12 acres, and that's where the Salt Springs are at. And those Salt Springs is where we get our name, Celine. We tend to think of history a lot of times in Celine area from Orange Rusden on up, but this park will be dedicated theme of our distant history, from Orange Rusden back about 12,000 years, because people moved in this area about 12,000 years ago. The Salt Springs, they attracted mammoth hunters and the Ice Age people. After that, the Potawatomi, the salt, the fox, the Ojibwa, they moved in, and they used to salt to trade with neighboring tribes, and they used to preserve their food for the winter. The French came in 1635, and they were interested because the salt was used to preserve their pelts and the fur trade industry back then. They had to get those pelts back to Europe or the eastern, east coast United States. When Orange Rusden came into Celine, Celine was already a town, it was already a settlement. The first settlers were down at the Salt Springs, not up here in town. So, when Orange Rusden came in, it was already a community, and it was called Salt City back then. And Orange Rusden, he took the name of the river, which got its name from the springs, and named the town Celine. So, that's how we get our name. So, there's very little reference in town here as to all this history and why we're called Celine. So, we feel that this park will really be a benefit to the community. It's a piece of property you're already own. Hopefully, a lot of the things that we need to do to make it a true park with walking trails and a non-motorized path in it can be done with grants and funding, but you have to be a park first before you go after those grants and those funding. It fits in with our FY14 Non-Motorized Trail Program, and it's strategic locations between Curtis Park and Wilderness Park, and it'll connect those two with hiking path and a non-motorized trail. And it's a beautiful piece of property down by the river. It's part of the flood plain, the Celine River, and it's the park geography is much the same as Mill Pond and Curtis. So, and also, the Depot Museum from the Celine area Historical Society has made available to me some space in a glass case to do some kind of a, oh, display in regards to Salt Springs. So, I'm currently looking for some arrowheads or something. I've never been lucky enough to find an arrowhead. But if anybody knows that someone would like to have some artifacts like that, they could donate, please come see me. We'll set up a display in this glass case down there. As you know, the Depot Museum serves as more than just a train museum. It really deals with all the history of Celine. So, it'd be nice to add 12,000 years of history on top of what we already have. There is the update. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Peters. If there's nothing further related to the Celine-Salt Springs History Trail or proposed park, we move on then to our second-to-last discussion item, which is an update on our sidewalk inventory and funding. I guess I'll turn it over to staff, and if DPW Director Fordice would like to come up and just give us an update. I know you and I had a casual conversation about, on Friday, about where we're at with this, but if you want to fill in the rest of council, that'd be beneficial.
Certainly. The effort to do the survey in-house has continued to move slow. In our last meeting, we, several meetings ago, discussed the concept of hiring an intern that, in the cycle of classes and work at U of M, also was not a really timely solution. So, I'm close to hiring a consultant to hopefully very quickly and thoroughly do the survey. It's part of a service line that they offer along with, they're also a contractor to, that can do certain kinds of sidewalk repairs. So, but this line of service where they come in and survey, measure, document, and provide a map of, inventory of all the sidewalk flaws, something they're very good at, and I hope to have a number for you at the next meeting on that. And also, in that conversation we had during the meet-and-greet, I'd made a comment about the sidewalk budget. And this year is the first year we've changed how we're funding sidewalk. So, I was looking in the wrong location. So, there is $100,000 in the sidewalk budget for this year.
Any questions for our DPW director? No? Mr. Burgoyne?
No.
No? Okay. Well, thank you for your comments, and we'll perhaps look forward to seeing some sort of action item on our agenda on the 30th. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. If there's nothing further relating to the sidewalk inventory, then our last discussion item is alley accessibility and easements. I think directly, relating directly to the recently-named Leather Bucket Alley. Mr. Gierba, that was something you added to the discussion?
Yeah, as, as many on council and many other individuals know, I have a real concern with how the city handles its agreements with private property owners and such. And I understand that there were some concerns and issues with this alley and the access and easements that we have on it. What I'd like to know is understand where we currently stand with the property owners surrounding that and how we're handling their ability to use the alley at this time.
Mr. Campell, do you care to comment on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as anybody, again, open to the public is, at least as I've stated from the beginning when this was a proposal, that it needed to be continuous, even with the, to be continuously open to the public in some level, so folks can traverse through there, whether they're going from one end to the other, whether they're traversing to the back entrances of businesses that are adjacent to the alley, in addition to, obviously, along with those, the tables and chairs, the areas that are being leased by Brecken Grill and Mangiamo. And so, so I, my, my understanding of how it's working is it's continuing to provide that.
So, is there anything prohibiting Benito's from placing tables in that alley?
Without a lease, I would say yes.
So, we're restricting some of the use of the time of that alley to, to private property owners, where the easement says that all the buildings and property owners surrounding that alley are supposed to have access to it. So, my question is, how are we limiting it, its use for profit, because the individuals that are using it right now are making money and excluding one of the businesses that are associated to it? That's my biggest concern, and I know that our legal opinion says that, oh, we can do that. I have a very big problem with doing that at the expense of... I have a very big problem with doing that at the expense of a property owner that abuts that and made an agreement with the city, assuming that they were going to be able to use it as an easement at any time, or was considering it for public use, and now is being restricted at times for private use. So my issue on this is I think that somehow Benito's should be able to use that alley, and that we somehow rewrote, rewrote the lease incorrectly. And I know I will not be supporting the lease as it's written in the future, and unfortunately, I think at this point in time, we should really be reconsidering that we wrote a lease that wasn't valid. So I just want to make that statement because there's a lot of stuff going back and forth on who has access to that alley and who doesn't. And from my perspective, I believe that in good faith, whoever owned Wags and Whistles, that building and Benito's, where Benito's in place, had some expectation of how they would be able to use it, and we took some of that limitation away from them by granting that, the lease that we did.
If, if that's a motion to consider an issue, I would second that motion, so that two council members can bring back an issue. I, I support that.
Well, first of all, I don't know if Mr. Girba formatted his, his statements in the form of a motion, nor do, conversely, I don't know if a motion is necessary. If this council wishes to have additional discussion and dialogue, maybe, I, I think it'd be appropriate to have legal counsel present in the future. I'm certainly amenable to that. Mr. Girba, I guess I would defer back to you, since you're the council member who, who added this item to the agenda this evening.
My question, when does the lease expire?
Uh, March of 2014.
And if we potentially have a lawsuit, proceed forward, which is cheaper for us to handle? Not the lawsuit, or to simply try and modify the agreement we currently have to allow them access in there? From my perspective, I think all the businesses that surround that alley should have access to that alley, which was one of my concerns when I originally voted for the contract, or voted for the allowing this to happen, and was told, oh, yeah, we spoke with the business owner, which apparently didn't happen, and, oh, there were no easements, and now we understand there are easements. So there's a lot more information out here now than was before, and I'm sensitive to the individual that's got concerns about having access to that alley, just because I don't like seeing a city present itself in situations where a lot of information was missing and is being reinterpreted in a different approach at this time.
Mr. Rhodes.
Speaking of reinterpretations, if I could, I personally spoke with the owner of 100 South Ann Arbor Street on multiple occasions and explained the intent of how we anticipated the use of that lease, and there were no concerns stated by that property owner at that point in time. With respect to the easements, I can address that, but I do know there was communication with her.
Mr. Burgoyne.
I'll refer the council to the charter. The charter says that if any two council members have an interest in putting an item on the agenda, that item will go onto the agenda. That's the city charter. So I have an interest in this issue coming back to be considered.
No one, no one's disagreeing with, with the charter or the opinion that you just articulated. What we're attempting to discover through, through dialogue and hopefully through the, the commenting of every council member is in what form is it most appropriate to come back? So no one's disagreeing and no one's suggesting that the issue's not going to become, come back to be discussed. What I'm simply trying to establish is what is the best way to, to bring this issue forward, and what are the concerns and questions that a majority of council has? So, um, Mr. Girba, again, I guess I would defer back to, or refer back to you, excuse me. What, um, how would you like to, to move forward on this issue? What would your recommendation be?
My recommendation is I want to know what the property owner's desire is in terms of being able to set up tables in that alley. If that's not the desire, and she's preferring to proceed forward with the other concern, then that's her prerogative to do it. But I think we as a city need to honor our agreement that said we would allow public access, according to the quote that I'm reading in, in the email that I received, that all buildings approaching that alley have access to it. At this point, we're limiting that access for certain hours during the day, and I don't think we should be doing that. If we're going to allow everyone in there that abuts that alley to do it, then I think that we should do that. So my question is, if we bring this forward, what is our recourse? Can we rewrite our lease at this point, or did we enter into a lease that at this point we would potentially getting sued? Which way is the best way to handle it, I guess?
All right. I, I appreciate the clarity. I think what would probably be helpful is you, you indicated a desire to get a little bit more background information, which is probably appropriate. And I think probably having somebody from Clark Hill, our legal counsel, here to address some of the legal concerns would be appropriate. So I believe, was Scott already planning to be here on the 30th?
Yes.
Yes, okay, because we're talking about a few other issues, I believe, that would require his input. So if you're amenable to this, Mr. Girba, we'll add it as a discussion item, get the information that, that you request, and of course, if, if a council member wants to offer a motion from the floor, he or she certainly has the, the opportunity and freedom to do that on that occasion. But hopefully, that, that will provide a little bit more clarity.
Right.
Okay? Mr. Burgoyne.
My understanding, the two items that are of issue are who are the abutters that had, you know, jointly allowed this, this alley? And of those people who jointly had property rights, what benefit was expected of each one? From, from the email, I saw that each of the abutters was supposed to have some, some benefit. Now, that benefit may not be, need to be equal, but, but I think there are a couple of issues. Who are the abutters, and what benefits rights do they have?
Okay. Thank you. So this item will come back for further discussion on the 30th. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Girba.
Yep.
Are there any other discussion items? No, then we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this, at this time and make comments or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. However, anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any public comments? There are no public comments. Is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council this evening? No, then I should remind you that we have our next meeting on the 30th with a work meeting beginning at 6:30 to discuss the penalties that we apply to late water sewer and tax bills. If I'm not mistaken, Treasurer Bennett, you have some support material that you'll email, email out to council members in advance of that meeting, probably sometime later this week?
Yes.
Okay? So be expecting that. So that will take place here in the council chambers at 6:30 on the 30th with a regular meeting to follow at 7:30. I will confirm this via email, but right now, there's a high likelihood we will be having a work meeting at 6:00 PM on the 7th. We will try and provide everyone with food. If that's the case, if I can push it back to 6:30, that, that's my preference, and I believe that, that's your preference as well. And that meeting will include two things. One, AAA TA, because of course, they've been renamed, will be reporting back and talking to us a little bit more about expanding public transportation options in the Celine area. And then also, our insurance writer would like to come and discuss, and it's of course very timely, the impacts and/or ramifications, depending on your perspective and opinion, that the Affordable Care Act will have on our ability to manage cost and provide health insurance to our employees. Make you aware of that. And again, I'll confirm that by, via email. And we will not be having a work meeting on the 21st, just a regular meeting at 7:30. Mr. Burgoyne.
On whatever's sent out by email on the penalties, if we could have a copy of that at the meeting.
Absolutely. Won't be a problem. So did you get Mr. Burgoyne's comment there? The documentation that's provided via email, if we could just be sure to make copies and have that available at that work session on the 30th? Yeah, that won't be a problem. Okay? We don't need to excuse any absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. This was a rather lengthy but productive council meeting, and I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:49 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Girba and seconded by Ms. Tahar. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. If the ayes have it, this meeting's adjourned.